Schools effective July 1, 2021 and an annual base pay of $196,095. And I move further that the board chairperson be authorized to execute the proposed contract on behalf of the board with respect to Mr. Medansy's employment as superintendent of schools.
Second.
Uh, Mrs. Blanchard, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Mr. Byszewski.
Affirm yes.
Yes. Mr. Brown.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Mr. Kozniewski.
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Cipriano.
Missy, are you there?
Hey.
Is she muted?
I don't know. I don't see her.
Before. Okay. Uh, Mrs. Clark.
For the third time, I say an enthusiastic yes.
Mr. Darrenowski.
You know, you guys used up all the adjectives.
Mr. Falvo.
Yes.
Mr. Oshiana.
An excited and very happy yes, Steve.
Mrs. Carmody.
Without a doubt, a yes.
And I'm going back, back again to, uh, to.
Missy, yeah, I don't know. Does anybody see her on the screen?
Power.
Oh, geez, you're kidding.
Hold on, let me, let me see if I can call her quick.
All right. So what will I do? Come back to that?
Let's see if we can get ahold of her first.
What are you doing, Colleen? Trying to text her?
Okay, hold up, hold on one second. Can you guys hear Missy?
Yes.
Yes. I'm trying to sign back in. I lost the power flickered off and it just came back on. I'm trying to sign back in.
Well, so, so we're doing a roll call and, um, what, what say you for, uh, for Mr. Medansy's appointment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, congratulations.
Come on back in, yes.
Can I suggest we all have cookies now?
No, I, I just, I, I have a few things before we begin. Um, our unanimous vote certainly is indicative of our confidence and appreciation for the leadership that Steve has demonstrated for the last six years as our assistant superintendent. He has brought many innovative ideas and policies to our school system. Steve's goal has always been, and I know it will continue to be, to prepare our students to be college and career ready. I am so very, very happy and proud to have Steve as our next superintendent. Um, I feel like I'm his mother, um, which of course I could be. Um, I don't see Steve. Is, am I missing something? Where is he?
He's, he's there. He's on page two.
So I can't see him, right?
If he says something, I think he gets bumped to the first page, doesn't he?
Hi, Terry.
Oh, there you are, Steve. Steve, our sincere congratulations. I'm sure there may be any other board members that want to make a statement, but we are thrilled. Do I have any board members?
I'd like to say something.
They had a stand up.
Yeah. So, and Steve, you know, a couple of things. The leadership team in our district has cultivated some very impressive talent, right? And the planning and the development that has taken place for these people, it's been, uh, done to grow them, to prepare them, and to build our team, to expand and take on more. Uh, and this has been a tremendous benefit to the district. A solid succession plan is a sign of a very well managed team. We have a solid succession plan here, and Tim, thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Medansy has been with the district since 2012. Uh, he was principal at John F. Kennedy Middle School and then became the assistant superintendent. Your knowledge, Steve, of Mr. Medansy, uh, your drive, your passion is second to none. And you've ju- you've done a fantastic job. You've been on an on-the-job interview for the last nine years. And I think we've seen some amazing and outstanding work from you and it from the dis- this district's teachers, administrators, staff. They, they've done amazing work and I feel we're absolutely going in the right direction. And with Mr. Medansy moving into the role of superintendent, I feel the district will continue to build on all that great work, uh, and will continue giving our students an exemplary education, as Mrs. Carmody said, getting them college and career ready. So Steve, congratulations, all the best to you. I think the district is extremely lucky to have you in this role. Thank you, Zach.
Any other board members have something to say?
Mr. Darrenowski.
Mr. Darrenowski.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. Um, you know, I, I can recall back when we first interviewed Steve and, um,
A little kid that he was.
And, um, the, the night of the interview, um, he came in and, uh, was very aggressive, very forthright, uh, right on the mark. I mean, he, he was impressive to the board. But I think what impressed me most was that he had his family sitting in the car in the parking lot.
With a dog.
With a dog, okay, underway to go on vacation. And, and he was dedicated then to come to the board and, you know, go through the interview process. And, uh, and he has proven that he has not let the board down. He has not let the district down. And, uh, I'll tell you, he, he is a, he, he is someone that I think everybody should emulate. But again, Steve, thank you for accepting the position. You've earned it, and I think you're going to do wonders here in Southington.
And Steve, where are your beautiful children? I saw them and I don't see them.
Well, yeah, they're probably hiding. We had a little family conversation.
We see them. They're right there.
Where are they?
And they're all smiling, big smiles, as they should be.
And, and what a tribute that your mother-in-law likes you too, Steve.
She's, she thinks I'm okay. Yes.
She thinks you're okay. All right.
Very proud of your father, so.
I'm sure she's proud of you.
Yep.
And I'm sure your dad, and I know your mom is up in heaven saying, that's my son. That's my son.
Bob and, and Stan and Joe have their hands up as well.
I'm sorry, Joe, I didn't see you.
Mr. Brown, you could go first.
Thank you, Joe. Don't you dare say H for beauty. Um.
Well, I know that was a lie, so. You're more pretty than I am.
We're not going there. So I, Steve, you know, I could probably talk for hours about you. I've known you since your, just about your first day in the school system and different roles. Um, your passion, your enthusiasm, your everything about you. This town, and I look at the screen, there's so many quality people here. This town is very fortunate to have all these people. But I want to say to have you as our future leader now is I, I could not be happier for the district, for all our employees, for the kids, for the parents, for this town, and for you too, Steve. You've earned this and you will be terrific. And I pledge you absolute support. And I would even let the Red Sox beat the Yankees a couple of times.
Very good. Yeah, go ahead, Joe. I think you were next.
Um, so I'm, I'm really excited, uh, to have Steve as our next superintendent. Um, I had the opportunity of, of meeting Steve's mom, um, at a certain point and, um, you know, just the, the absolute, how, how she talked about Steve and the drive that she had, um, you know, when, when I had met her and just that long-term thinking and just kicking butt and taking names. Um, I definitely know where Steve got it from. And, um, you know, my, my yes vote tonight is, again, I, I know I always say this, but I, I am vested in this community and, um, you know, this is why we do what we do. And I'm excited that you're going to be, uh, leading the ship there, Steamboat Willie, um, you know, and leading us to, uh, to great things to come, especially after we get past this year. So.
Right.
Well done, Steve.
Colleen, you're ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Um, congratulations, Mr. Medansy. I am not surprised. From day one, you have shown that enthusiasm. But I just want to say something to the building administrators that are, that are on tonight. When you see that Mr. Medansy is a little bit stressed out and needs a break, invite him into your building and let him be around kids because the one thing that's going to recharge his batteries is being near kids, is talking to them, is, is just being in a school and that's, he gets his energy. So if you, if he needs a break, invite him in. Don't, oh, just don't all do it at once, but don't ever forget, Steve, that's the reason you got into education. So congratulations, my friend.
Um, Mr. Falvo.
So I want to publicly say congratulations to you, Mr. Medansy. Um, I couldn't think of a better leader, especially in this time we're in the middle of a pandemic, somebody that knows the district and who will have a steady hand, um, going forward. And I've had many conversations with you. Um, you've also personally helped me in like certain graduate, uh, my, my graduate assignments. I can tell, um, that you very care about the students, um, even in the position that you're, um, that you're about to be in, in the position you're in now, you care about the students. And, um, I've always, and that's why I admire you.
Thank you.
And that's very important to have in a leader for our district. So congratulations.
Thank you, David.
Did I miss anyone? Anyone that's on the screen from the public that has anything to say to our new superintendent-to-be?
Terry, it's Marilyn Call. I'd love to pop in if you don't mind.
Please go right ahead.
I'd like, I'd like to thank, thank Tim for his, you know, continued leadership for the last several years. And I just, um, I, I firmly believe that I speak for all, at least the elementary principals, that, um, we are thrilled with this news and we just know that Steve is going to continue to send our district to the utmost goals and, and achievements. And we are so thrilled to have the ability to continue to work with him in a new level, but also in many ways the same level because he is always so accessible to all of us. And Colleen, you are right. I mean, he, he thrives when he's around kids and we hope we can get him into our schools as much as possible. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Carmody, Mark Fuller from the YMCA.
I'm sorry, who, who am I talking to?
Mark Fuller from the YMCA.
Oh, Mark, okay, go right ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to, uh, say a, a heartfelt congratulations to Steve on a, a well-deserved position there. Uh, you've got a great mentor in Tim and we certainly appreciate all of his efforts. But, uh, the Board of Education and Southern to Public Schools and the YMCA have been great partners on making this community the best it can be for kids. And I feel so relieved and so secure in the future leadership with, with Mr. Medansy. Uh, very, very pleased and thankful that this is the direction that the Board of Education has decided to go. And Steve, I am so looking forward to jumping into a pond with you in January. I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it, buddy.
Oh, God.
Thanks a lot. Congratulations.
Got to get that in. Anyone else? I don't want to miss anyone.
Oh, yeah.
Terry? Terry?
It's Val DePaul. Go ahead, Val.
Great. Thank you, Terry. Um, Steve, I just want to say, um, a big congrats to you. You know, I go way back with your, with your in-laws, Nick and Sue. And, um, I'm very, very happy for you and Christie and your children. It's, it's wonderful to have you in our system. Um, and our kids are going to benefit. I, I just want to say on a, on a personal note, your, your first year at JFK, um, you stepped up and helped my son, Jack, and, uh, we, we don't forget that. So I think your, um, your work with the kids is, is definitely what motivates you. So I'm, I'm just thrilled to have you, be able to work with you and, uh, congrats to all of you. Thanks. Thanks, Terry.
You're very welcome. Anyone else?
Mrs. Carmody, may I speak?
Of course.
Thank you. Um, Christie, I apologize to you in advance, but I have to give a little, that's hard for you at home because he takes a lot of great credit. But, um, Steve, credit well deserved. Um, I sent you a text earlier. I meant every minute of it, minute, every bit of it. Um, I'm really proud to have
Yeah.
the opportunity to work with you by your side. Um, you helped me grow in many ways. And I would not be where I am without your support. And I'm looking forward to our ride together in the next few years.
Thank you.
Mr. Canal, did I see your hand up?
Yes, I, I was just going to say, Mrs. Carmody, we, thank you. We don't want to forget that we, we do want to allow Mr. Medansy the opportunity to say.
Oh, I know, I know.
Oh, he hasn't said anything yet?
I, I haven't forgotten. I haven't forgotten. I wanted to get everyone that wanted to say something to Steve first while his family was here so they could see how wonderful we think he is. I hope he's a good boy at home too. Um, and I know he is. But Steve, it is your turn now to give us your thoughts.
Thank you, Terry. And I just, I'd like to start by thanking the whole board. Um, it means a lot to me to have full support going into this position. As you know, um, any new superintendent, let alone in a large district, you know, it's a, it's a stressful decision and it's a lot of responsibility that I don't take lightly. So knowing that I have the full support of the board means a lot to me. Um, I also want to thank my family, both my, my brothers and sisters are on this call tonight up in Rhode Island, my aunt in Pennsylvania, and all my in-laws in Connecticut. I have a great family and they're very supportive of me. If anybody knows me, I kind of, I kind of turn it off when I get to 691 on my way home to Wallingford because, you know, I try to give it my everything every day when I'm on the job. And, and so when I get home, I can be known to be a little bit aloof at times and my family wonders like, how are you actually, you know, running a district? You know, uh, and I try to convince them that, that in Southington, some people think I'm a big deal and they're not buying it. So I, I'm really glad tonight that, that all of you said all these kind things because maybe I'll get a little bit of street cred at home for at least a week or so before my teenage daughters start to roast me again. Joe, I have to say, I've never been called Steamboat Willie before, so that's.
Steve, you're, you're always going to be my koala too.
And, and Bob, I, my wife will take exception to the fact that you're going to let the Red Sox beat the Yankees because she won't agree with that. She's a dyar Yankee fan.
She's smart.
So all the staff that's here tonight, the administrative team, the teachers, people in the community, I just have to say this, that, you know, this has been a lot of thinking and reflecting for me over the past week or two, and, and I don't take this responsibility lightly. And I think that's why I was doing a lot of reflecting. I wanted to make sure I truly understood what I was committing to. And about six years ago, I remember we had just finished renovating Kennedy Middle School, um, when the posting went up for the assistant superintendent's job. And I was torn at that time. And I think Val kind of hit it on the head. I loved being around the kids and I knew, you know, going to central office, I knew just the municipal center in itself wasn't a building that housed any kids. And I worried about not being ready, you know, to not have that daily interaction and contact with kids when the job got tough. And I'm not going to lie, I still have trouble with that, uh, to this day. And so when that time came, I had to do some serious thinking and the old adage came to mind and it's, it's, and I said it to my staff at Kennedy at the time and I meant it. Timing meets opportunity. And there was an opportunity to become the assistant superintendent. And by doing that, I would get to stay in Southington. And at that point, I had been a, an administrator for multiple years. And I knew if I ever aspired to a central office position, uh, I might have to move on if I didn't take that opportunity when it presented itself. And so I took the opportunity. I'm grateful I did because for the last six years, I've been blessed to work alongside Tim. And I, I've worked alongside a man that demonstrates the, the traits and characteristics that, that I admire and, and that I subscribe to. Um, he's been a mentor to me in every way and a support. Our administrative team is as talented as you can imagine, every one of them. And our teaching staff works tirelessly. Uh, you know, there's, there's, Tim always used the analogy, we have worker bees in Southington, but we do. I've seen teachers this year rise and go above and beyond and, and meet everyone's wildest expectations. Um, and so that's what brought me to the decision of, of your superintendent position here in Southington. That timing and opportunity said, if I ever aspire to a super tenancy position, this is your time. Will you take the opportunity? Um, and so I thought about the district and the town that I've, that I've come to love since I've, I've arrived there. And I couldn't imagine doing it anywhere else. And, uh, I'm not going to lie, I'm a little bit humbled by all the compliments. It's a little bit embarrassing and I'm kind of glad I'm just sitting here virtually by myself right now and not in the public assembly room, having to speak to a crowd of people. Um, so thank you, everyone, for your support. I really look forward to this opportunity and I'm extremely grateful. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Steve. We are very, very pleased. Thank you. All right, moving on right along with our meeting. And I thank all of your relatives for being here, Steve.
So I, I, if I can, just for my family that, that's not always tuning into these meetings, especially virtually, and I think some of them in Rhode Island still who don't even know what I really do for a living. This is the point in the meeting that if you've got better things to do, I wouldn't be offended if you.
Get off, right.
If you can believe you, yeah. Uh, because the public meetings aren't all that exciting beyond the pomp and circumstance.
Very good, Steve.
Steve.
Hi, Suzie.
Mrs. Carmody?
Yes.
That is my sister.
I, I don't know if you guys can see me, but I've been around some of, um, the job sites that Steve has been on. He often introduces me as his twin, but, um, I am older and wiser. So just, I want him to remember that.
Okay.
Um, but Steve has, um, what a life he's lived. I'm so proud of him and I'm proud to represent the family. Um, you know, having lost his mother this year and he balanced work and taking care of her to her last breath. I know she's there in spirit, smiling, saying, I, I made the man that he is today. Um, and we're, we're just all very, very proud of you. And, and thank you for inviting us all to be there. It's nice to do this virtually since we can't travel and be there. But we love you and we're going to pray for your success and we're proud of you.
Thank you.
How very nice. Thank you. Oh, boy, what a nice sister. That was very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
You're so welcome, believe me, so welcome. Um, I, I don't know if there's anyone else. I certainly don't want to miss every, anyone because I don't get a full screen. How about his mother-in-law? Does she have anything to say? Suzie, unmute yourself. Do you know how to do that, Sue?
I do know how, Terry. I'm not like you.
Thank you. Okay, continue on, fine, I am Suzuki.
Oh, we're old friends, you know, I have to say. Mrs. Carmody and I, um, no, we are just extremely proud of Steve, always have been. He's a wonderful son-in-law. He's a great husband to our daughter, Christie, and, um, and such an amazing father to his children. So my grandchildren. So, uh, we are very blessed to have Steve and as are you to have them in Southington. And we're very proud of them. Congratulations, Steve. Love you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so now I'm not going to cry. I'm going to continue with the meeting, Steve. I'm, because sometimes I cry a little bit, but I'm going to go on, okay? I'm not missing anybody that wants to.
There's enough of us crying out.
I'm a little crying here.
Others of us crying out here, I promise.
Okay, I'm not going to cry. I'm going to move on. Okay, everybody? Uh, the next thing on our agenda, um, is the STEPS presentation.
So, Mrs. Carmody, if I, if I may, we have with us this evening, uh, Mrs. Albanese, who is the coordinator and, uh, also happens to be a Southington parent. And has, uh, she has some students with her this evening. And Mr. Medansy is actually going to go back to work right now because he is, he is going to share the screen and have the PowerPoint presentation, uh, from STEPS. And, um, Megan, if you, wherever you are, we will, we will leave it to you.
Thank you, Tim. I'm going to, um, invite Christina Sims, the Director of Youth Services, to join me. And she can go ahead and introduce the amazing kids that are going to knock your socks off.
Thank you, Megan. Um, we are very happy to have two of our youth council students. Not only are they on the youth council, but they are part of our executive team for youth council. And that is a new, um, a new part of STEPS. But it came from the youth themselves. They wanted more of a leadership role. And so when they asked, uh, Megan followed through and gave it to them. So we have two of our executive team members, Sophia LeBlanc and Soph, um, her name is Sophia, but she goes by Soph Sasha. They are going to present, um, our steep, uh, STEPS, uh, Prevention Coalition successes. And I'm going to turn it over to you, Sophia. Go ahead.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Sophia LeBlanc and I'm here with Soph Sasha. We are representatives of the STEPS Youth Council Executive Committee. Tonight, we would like to share with you the successes of the STEPS Substance Misuse Prevention Coalition. Next slide, please. To start off, STEPS means Southington's townwide effort to promote success. Since 2009, this has been our community's Substance Misuse Prevention Coalition. We strive to make prevent, prevention a priority here in Southington through education, limiting access and policy change. We specifically focus on underage drinking, tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drug prevention. Additionally, we follow the Search Institute's 40 developmental asset model. So the more assets that youth have, the more likely they will grow up to be caring, competent, and successful individuals. Here are some of our current initiatives and prevention efforts. So this is what most of our projects are based on. Next slide, please. So where do we get our data? And our data helps to build up our campaigns within the community. So with the help of the Southington Board of Education and the Southington School District, STEPS surveys Southington youth in grades seven, nine, and 11 every two years. So most recently, we had our sixth survey. We use the Search Institute's Attitudes and Behavior Survey to do so, which consists of 160 questions and provides a snapshot of the current experiences and perspectives of adolescent youth in Southington. It also involves the 40 developmental asset checklist as well as substance use and misuse information. Now, recently, we added 14 questions to the survey to gather town-specific data. So this includes additional substances like vaping, which has begun, become such a relevant issue, and access and location of use, frequency of use, stress, and the idea of having a trusted adult in one's life. Now, this is one of our main assets that we prioritize in our coalition, although it is often overlooked. Next slide, please. Again, the survey monitors trends in substance abuse and other risk-taking behaviors over time through the use of the 2009 baseline data. So we use this information through our community to determine the effectiveness of substance misuse prevention and intervention programs offered in the school and community. We use it to identify changing trends and areas of need, and that's where we base off our initiatives, what areas to focus on at a certain time. In addition, collection of this information allows Southington to receive state and federal grants that support youth development. Next slide, please. Here are some survey demographics. This focuses on exactly who took the survey. So as mentioned, every two years, Southington students in grades seven, nine, and 11 take the survey at Southington High School and Apollo and Kennedy Middle Schools. This is the demographic breakdown of who takes the survey out of a total 1,256 surveys collected, specifically by grade. There were 419 seventh graders who took this, who took the survey, 467 ninth graders who took the survey, and 368 eleventh graders who took the survey. Next slide, please. Now going back to the developmental assets, these are really truly important to our coalition. So the 40 developmental asset framework was created by the Search Institute, Institute, and consists of 20 internal assets and 20 external assets. The more assets a child has, the more likely they are to grow up to be a positive, successful adult. Research shows that the more assets a child has, the less likely it is that they will engage in risk-taking behaviors like substance use. As you can see, the assets focus on what you have in terms of support, relationships, opportunities you need in their families, schools, and communities, strengths, values, and commitments that are nurtured within young people. Next slide, please. Here's another graph. And this breaks down the developmental assets which protect against risk-taking behaviors. So here we see the average number of risk-taking behaviors compared with the asset level. As we can see, the bar on the far left shows that students reporting the fewest assets, zero to 10, engage in an average of 6.3 risk-taking behaviors. Meanwhile, the bar on the far right shows that students with the most reported number of assets, 31 to 40, on average engage in less than one risk-taking behavior. Again, the more assets that a youth has, the less likely they are to engage in risk-taking behaviors. Next slide. Here's another graph breakdown with some pie charts. So here we see the developmental asset levels as reported by Southington youth. And this compares information from the 2009 Southington averages to the 2020 Southington averages to the national average. So our goal in Southington is to ensure that all youth eventually experience between 31 to 40 of the developmental assets. The pie chart in the center shows that 46% of Southington youth report having fewer than 20 assets, which puts our community above the rest of the country, where 52% of youth report having fewer than 20 assets. We also see a shift from 2009 to 2020. In 2009, 55% of youth reported under 20 assets and 14% less than 10. Then in 2020, we saw that 46% reported under 20 assets and 9% reported under 10 assets. So we were able to see this positive shift in asset development with direct correlation to our asset-building classroom initiative. Each school in Southington has an asset champion that helps the school navigate building assets within 10. Next slide, please. Here we once again see how as past 30-day substance use decreases, that correlates to asset levels increasing. So the highest use rates are found among youth with the fewest number of reported assets. Next slide, please. Finally, here are some past 30-day substance use rates among youth. This involves tobacco, prescription drugs, marijuana, and alcohol. And this compares Southington information to. And this compares Southington information to Connecticut and to the United States. The 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Survey shows us data to see where Southington stands in comparison to local and national data. Because of the prevention work done in Southington, we are proud that Southington's past 30-day substance use rate is lower than the Connecticut and the United States average. Thank you for your time. Now I'll turn it over to Soph. Next slide, please.
Hi, I'm Soph. And thanks to our prevention efforts, overall trends indicate that Southington youth are making healthier and safer choices. Next slide, please. Most risk-taking behaviors are decreasing among Southington youths. Since the inception of STEPS and the active prevention work being done in the Southington community, we have seen a decline in overall risk-taking behaviors done by Southington youth. Next slide, please. Students who report having a trusted adult feel they could go to a parent for help, succeeding in school, resisting danger, and delaying gratification, low to moderate stress levels around acad- academics, and their parents' disapproval of substance use have had a lower past 30-day substance use rates. It's important to note that these students are not engaging in risk-taking behaviors report the, having these important positive factors in their lives. Next slide, please. Higher 30-day use rates are found among students who identify as bisexual, gay, or lesbian, and/or identify as Hispanic, Latino slash Latina, and report feeling sad or depressed, sadly attempting suicide, that do not have it, they, that they do not have an adult in their life that they trust, and/or could have an eating disorder, gamble, ditch school, steal, fight, have sex, or vandalize, all of the above and much more. It is not a surprise that students who do not feel supportive and do not have a trusted adult in their lives and who report being depressed are exhibiting past higher 30-day use rates. Next slide, please. 30-day use rates of vaping devices among Southington youth. The story is the same around the country. Vaping has exploded. Because of our partnership with the Southington School System and the Southington Police Department, we've been able to educate the students and parents in Southington about the dangers of vaping. Unfortunately, until there is federal, federal, federal policy change, sorry, we do not see this problem dissipating as quickly as the aerosols that come out of vapes. Next slide, please. Vaping is popular among youth. Southington is not alone. Southington is at the forefront of school-based prevention efforts, state funding, especially focuses on vaping initiatives and vaping prevention initiatives, sorry. Southington is a state leader in vape education and intervention. Next slide, please. An important measure taken in the survey is perceived risk of harm. Perceived risk of harm is something that is largely talked about in the prevention community. A person's evaluation of his or her risk of danger or an adverse outcome. The less likely a youth perceives a substance to be, the more likely they are to try it. Next slide, please. And as I was talking about perceived risk of harm, currently, the perceived risk of harm around marijuana use is the lowest among our four core substances, which are alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs referring to marijuana and prescription medication. When STEPS first began surveying in 2009, 83% of students thought marijuana use was harmful. Now you can see that only 52% of students in 11th grade that were surveyed perceived marijuana to be harmful. It's important to remember that 90% of addictions start in the teen years, and any substance use before the age of 25 can be damaging to the developing brain. Next slide, please. Our data also shows, next slide, academics cause the most day-to-day stress among students. While this data was collected pre-COVID, it, it is still evident that the number-one stressor in students' lives is still academics. Next, please. Next slide. Youth need trusted adults. One of the largest protective factors for youth is if they have a trusted adult in their life. As we can see from these numbers, more work needs to be done in this area as 44% of youth don't have someone they feel they can turn to. Next slide, please. And finally, alcohol is still a factor. With the latest trends in products constantly emerging, it is important to remember that alcohol is still the substance that youth most commonly consume. The last data survey, the last survey data shows us that 43% of 11th graders have attended a party where other youth were drinking in the past year. Now, here's a little shameless plug, our STEPS liquor stickers have been a successful method in aiding with youth alcohol prevention. Not only were we able to trademark our STEPS liquor stickers, they are sought after by many other coalitions in the state. Next slide, please. And finally, our work is still not done. Prevention is a marathon, not a sprint. With the intentional prevention efforts of STEPS Coalition, we are able to see the improvement in the lives of Southington youth. However, we know our work is never done. We need to continue to be in the know, educate ourselves and others, and stay in the forefront of local and state policy change to continue providing a better, safer future for our youth. Thank you so much for inviting us and having us. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Well, first of all, uh, thank you so much for a wonderful presentation and all the work you have done for the children of Southington. I, I can't tell you how much we appreciate it. I'm sure, I don't see Missy, but is she there?
Mm-hmm. Are you there?
Yes, I'm right here. Hello.
I know Missy has worked with STEPS. I, I'm sure you have some things you might want to say, Ms.
Well, yeah, I was going to give everybody else one. I am so proud of this STEPS team. Every student, every ounce of leadership that continues to grow month and week after week, it's, it's really amazing to watch them explode and really be passionate about the things that matter, not to the next generation, but their generation, the here and now. And that's so important. We don't find many adults looking at the here and now. They're looking at the past or, you know, way ahead. And we have youth in our community focused on the change for the now and planning for the advancement for the future. And I applaud all of you guys, young ladies. You did a fabulous job, fabulous job representing well, my friends.
Thank you. You did a wonderful job. Great presentation. Any other?
Terry, if I may, I just, I just want to thank the girls. Um, you did an amazing job, girls. You represented our executive team well, and you represented um, our entire coalition. Um, they have been working on this project for a number of months. And just as proud as Megan and I are of the data over the past 11 years, for them to come here to the Board of Education and present the, that data themselves uh, makes us beam with pride because that is just their leadership growing, and we are so proud of you. And we can't thank the Board of Education enough for all that you have done to support the coalition and the work that we have done here in Southington. So thank you very much for supporting not only the prevention work, but all of our asset-based classrooms because they really are truly making a difference. So thank you so much.
I can't, I can't not. I am a talker, so I have to add that I am so proud of you, girls. You rocked it. Um, you make me so, so proud. I get choked up when I listen to you. And I also have to say, Steve Madancy, it, I'm so thrilled that we got to be here for this. And congratulations, you are well, well-deserved. So congratulations.
I second that.
Great. Anyone else?
Could I ask you a question, Mrs. Cherry?
Where, where are we? Who was talking?
Isaiah.
Isaiah, certainly.
I just have a question. And, and I'll echo that, man. You, you guys did a great job. What a great presentation, very well spoken. You had command of your facts. You just, you did a phenomenal job. And, and it's good to see the numbers going in the direction, obviously, that they're going in, but I have a very interesting question. So the state of Connecticut now is moving, what appears to be rather quickly, potentially towards the legalization of recreational marijuana. Medical marijuana is a very big, it's different. Recreational marijuana is something that, I, I'm curious is to the, both the students and, and the leaders' position on that and the impact you think it's going to have uh, going forward with our, with our, with our students.
That's a great question. Let's let the girls take it first. Girls, let's hear what you have to say.
I would say legally, oh, sorry, Soph.
No, telling you to go first.
Um, medically, it's an entirely different story. But I think recreationally, I would just be concerned for my own peers. From a personal perspective, I feel like if it is legally recreational, it can so easily get out of hand, especially with the perceived risk of harm, that I would just worry for the health of my friends, not necessarily my friends, but my peers and the people around me. Um, because I feel like they might, may not regard it as they should with caution. And um, so that would be my perspective.
Thank you.
I would also agree with Sophia. I feel that if medical marijuana is a totally different story than recreational. If it becomes recre- recreational, it's going to be much wider spread than it already is. And it's going to be, could be in something that you can find in every home. And that's just not something that students need another not outlet, but another thing they can grab in case they feel a certain way. So it, and even with already underage uh, drug driving, imagine people driving when they're high, especially with the perceived risk of harm as it does not harm, they, people believe it does not harm them when we don't, we can't say. To my knowledge.
Great job. So I think they answered it. Um, and from just the, the STEPS perspective and prevention perspective, we look at any substance um, as a danger to the underdeveloped rate. So the longer you can keep any kind of substance, whether it be alcohol, marijuana, uh, nicotine, even prescription drugs from a wisdom tooth, the longer that you can keep youth away from that, the better chance they are of never gonna, um, of never developing a substance use disorder. So um, we know that we have some challenges ahead of us. And we know that in a year, it might be looking like we have to focus more on reducing access and what that looks like. Um, so we're ready to just keep our action plan going and, and stay on top of things.
That's great. I do think it's going to be a challenge. I think that, you know, unfortunately, it looks like tax dollars are becoming more important than the, than the protection and safety of our, of our citizens. So thank you for staying on top of that. It's going to be important.
Terry, can I say a couple of things?
Of course you can.
Uh, first of all, I want to tell you that, that was a great job you did and give a shout out to Megan. Megan was just inducted into our Rotary Club last night as a member. And she's done a couple of STEPS presentations already at Rotary, which are wonderful, and, and we love Megan. So um, I have a question and all the, and another statement, then a question. I, one of the things that this really shows is how important the assets are. That it's, this is factual. This is statistics. This is not just opinion. But how having those assets really prevents or reduces significantly the abuse of different substances. And adults they can trust is a huge part of the asset. So Southington is doing things right, although we're not perfect on that regard. And, and I do have a serious question. This is a bit personal, but also goes back to my teaching days. Um, and I hate to ask the question, but I, I, I'm worried about it. I know heroin use was unfortunately a problem in this town and in the state and our country um, several years ago. Is that on the decline now or? Because I noticed it wasn't on the list there of things of the focus.
Sure. So when we look at our prevention methods, we focus mainly on prescription drugs. Um, we're hoping that children that we're focusing on are able to get to heroin, however, we know that they are, right? Because it's happened in the past. So when we look at prescription drug abuse or even misuse, that wasn't on the radar when my predecessor, the amazing Kelly Lepard, took over, you know, started that. That wasn't even on the radar. They weren't even surveying for that. And then it slowly started to come up. Where, what we're very happy about is that in our category, 18 and under, even 21 and under, um, the overdose rates, the substance use disorder are seeing a small decline. Where you're seeing the huge increase is 21 and over. And really, that 21 to 41-year-old bracket is where you're seeing the most. Um, we are so fortunate that we have such an amazing partnership with the Southington Police Department so that we are really able to stay focused of um, where we need to be. And if someone is getting into heroin, well, the problem started a lot sooner than that. So where did we miss that in the beginning? Really keeping this wraparound approach to make sure that all of our kids in Southington here have a trusted adult in that safety net to catch them so they don't fall. Does that have a question, Bob? I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, yes, thank you, Megan.
But just to echo what Megan said, it's, that's why, that's why we're concerned about all substances. Um, vaping, nicotine, alcohol, because it doesn't start with just heroin. It starts with all the
Right, they, right. Prescription drugs lead to heroin, right.
Along with the asset and a lack of protective factors. So if we can start there, we can prevent it from even getting to nicotine, alcohol, and other drugs.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else? Well, once again.
Mrs. Carmody, Mark Poehler again from the Y. Can I just chime in one last time?
Of course you can, Mark.
Thank you. I'm going to put my STEPS hat on now. I'm, I'm lucky enough to be the chairperson of the STEPS Coalition uh, this current year. And uh, first off, couldn't be more proud of the two young ladies who presented tonight. A great job as always. They represent a lot of other amazing young kids that we get a chance to work with. So thank you. Uh, also be remiss to, uh, really again, just give a quick shout out to both uh, Megan Albanese and her predecessor, Kelly Lepard, for the great 11 years plus of prevention work in Southington. Uh, it's working. We're being looked at by other communities across this state and across this country as a leader in prevention. And that is mainly because of their diligence, their hard work, and their perseverance in this area. So uh, Megan and of course Kelly, thank you. And certainly the support from Christina Sims and Youth Services has been amazing as well. And this is all about partnerships. It's all about relationships. And once again, STEPS, the Board of Education, Southington Public Schools, the Y, Bread for Life, so many other organizations in town, working together to make this community great. Um, we're blessed to live in a great community and, and I thank everyone for being part of that.
Thank you, Mark. Very well said. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, once again, thank you. Thank you to the two young ladies for a wonderful presentation, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much. To all of you. Thank you. Um, moving on to the rest of our meeting. Um, we have next on our agenda, the approval of our minutes from our January 28th, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next on the agen- agenda, excuse me, communications from public. I don't know, Colleen, are you doing that or no? She's muted, so I don't know what she can.
There we go. Uh, yes, and I do have one. It just, it came in at seven o'clock um, this evening. So if I could read this. Good evening. Um, okay. Good evening. My name is Kevin Guy, and I live at 485 Berlin Street. As of this year, snow removal has been done for the past 32 years that allows for safe passage on main roads through town for students at Hatton Elementary School is not being done. The sidewalk is from the corner of Butternut Street to Stonegate Road. Along with the Berlin Street cut-through not being maintained anymore to save around $40,000 on the high end for a replacement. The use of the Berlin Street cut-through had kids walking less than a quarter of a mile in the snowy conditions, but are now forced to walk close to three-quarters of a mile, all to save around $40,000 and yet raise the budget over $3 million. Please keep in mind that this is a main road used through the town of Southington, Route 364. The entire street of Berlin Street has had snow removal until now. Also, all the cars that are now being funneled down Arlington Drive to Berlin Street to save time at drop-off for Hatton and all the other cars that use this neighborhood as a cut-through during pickup has increased the danger of this road significantly. The higher rate of speed in which the vehicles travel on Berlin Street, the Berlin Street cut-through not being maintained, replaced to save money, an already busy street with the added cars from drop-off and pickup, snowy removal from sidewalks not being done after 32 years, crossing guards complaining about unsafe conditions, and every study shows walkers are the most likely to be injured. I have now spoken with people from Butternut Lane, Berlin Street, and Stonegate Road and discovered that no one was notified of this change until a police officer told them to clear the snow or be fined. I have also talked to even more of the people in these neighborhoods, and everyone is in agreement to have the path from Berlin Street to Hatton redone and maintained. Signed, Kevin Guy.
Thank you. Is that, that's it? Mrs. Clark, no other?
Okay, and there was another, there's another message from him at 7:12. Um, let me just see here. Be, no. Um, he said, "Thank you. Um, as a follow-up to my previous email, I would like to say thank you to everyone for your help and especially to Mr. Cannelon for all your time and help." Signed, Kevin Guy. So those were the two, those were the two emails that I got from him um, this evening.
Tim, did you want to comment?
If I might, I, yes, I had a very nice conversation with Mr. Guy the other day. And I, I, I just wanted to point out that snow removal on those sidewalks and on the street, the school access walks is, is not under the umbrella of the Board of Education. I explained that to him, and he does, he does understand. And as you may recall, that issue of the path that run, that did run previously from Berlin up to the back that run, that did run previously from Berlin up to the back of the school was also technically not a school access walkway. And when the path fell into disrepair a number of years ago, and there were many complaints about that, the decision to remove that path was made at a meeting that was of the Committee of the Chairs. It was and still is town property. And the decision at that point in time was not to replace the path and to allow it to return back to its more natural state, if you will. So I I I spoke with Mr. Guy regarding um, safety for his children and the children in that area. And and I also spoke with Mr. Romano about it. We, we cannot put an additional crossing guard uh, at that area where Arlington Street comes in simply because the the slope of Berlin Street there, which if you, if you picture it, is high on the east end of of Berlin Street. Um, there's, there's a rise there and anyone crossing the street just wouldn't have a good vision of the of the cars and the cars wouldn't have a good vision of pedestrians there. And so our our police consultant said we absolutely cannot put up a crosswalk there. There is a crosswalk further down um, at Pleasant Street and it's painted in the road and there is a crossing guard there. So it's a, it's a bit of a a conundrum. I I believe when the snow pack is gone, uh, you know, students have walked across that field because there is a bit of a gravel path there and they walk on the sidewalks. The the issue with the sidewalks, I just simply, those simply aren't our contracts. Um, and I, you know, it's difficult to, for us to explain that whether it should be cleared or it shouldn't be cleared. That's just not something that really falls under the Board of Education umbrella or or under the umbrella of the Southington Public Schools. But the bottom line for me is I wanted to say that we, you know, we had very, very nice conversation and we're trying to do everything that we can to make sure that there's safe crossing and safe passage for his students and for other students who who walk in that direction. And students can walk up Berlin and down Arlington and into Cathy Drive and walk that path from Cathy Drive into into Hatton Elementary School there. So that, those were my comments. As I said, we had a very nice conversation about it. And I think he, he understands a little bit more about the dynamics of what, what occurred in the past and and where he and other residents of the area will go with that from here. I don't, I don't really know. But we definitely want to make sure that all of the students in that area are are safe. We, for example, we have a bus stop that's very close to there. Mr. Romano suggested that we could let the students, you know, hop on the bus and ride to uh, Hatton Elementary School that way. If any students continue to ride buses these days, it seems that Mr. Gary has a lot of traffic parents dropping off and picking up students more, more so than we've had in years prior. So that was it. Thank you, Mrs. Carmody.
Well, I'm, I'm very glad that you answered him and he was satisfied with the answer. Thank you. Colleen, you have any others? No? I guess not.
That was it.
That was it. Okay, moving on. Um, communication uh, from Board of Education members. Missy.
Mrs. Carmody, um, as we're focusing on assets tonight with our Steps Coalition, I wanted to give a little bit of an applause and a thank you to all of our administrators, our principals, vice principals, with the tender care they have been given to our families during this pandemic. Some things are gonna be unnoticed because they're private, but I know that there are many families that have been struggling in different areas. And our schools, each one of our schools have stepped up to take care of these families in their time of need in so many different ways. And I just wanted to personally publicly say thank you for taking care of the sensitive issues and bringing forth that support that is mentioned as an asset in our Steps Coalition and our teachers have done and our principals and vice principals have done just that. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you for that. And um, we have an opportunity to serve so many in our town that have been hit by this pandemic like they never thought they would. And everyone's coming together to do their part. And I know many of our schools are doing just that. And I I am so blessed to be part of that. So thank you. I also wanted to um, give an acknowledgement to our sports that started some weeks back. I have some really happy parents that have called me up. So thank you again for um, our schools getting ready and having the the cleanliness and all the protocol in place. Very happy parents to have their kids involved in athletics and very happy students to be able to be involved. So thank you again for um, having that come to fruition. And I just had some baseball players and basketball players here at Bread for Life yesterday coming off of practice and they were just really stoked just to be able to play, no matter how um, many, you know, people can't be in, a lot of fans, but they're very happy that the school made it happen and they're very thankful. So I wanted to share that. And lastly, we have some outstanding students in our community that feel like they have not done enough to give back to those in need. So we had, um, Oceana School did a give back for Super Bowl and there was a competition on uh, that school. And that school raised over nine hundred dollars for Bread for Life in one day. And that's pretty amazing. So I wanted to thank them for their efforts and the students and the parents coming out caring enough to make sure that food is provided for those in need. And then in Over and Strong Elementary, we had one young man who decided to make fudge for a hundred and ninety-two people. No easy task. I never made fudge. Don't want to make fudge. He also had to package the fudge and put a disclaimer on it that said this was not made in a professional kitchen for me to distribute it. And he did all those steps in order to get his fudge made. So just a good shout out to uh, Mr. Stephen out there and I thank him for his efforts and everybody enjoyed this sweet treat. So those are my little highlights for this.
Was the fudge good, Missy?
Oh, I don't, too sweet. Don't eat it. But everybody said it was.
Right, that's very nice. Thank you for sharing that. Any other board members have anything they'd like to share? Bob?
Yeah, real quick, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I do want to thank Tim. I know we'll get a chance at the end of the year. But uh, in light of all our exuberance over Steve, which is wonderful, I want to thank Tim for his leadership during what has to be the most difficult time ever in public education. So and then I also want to give a shout out and he's probably not here anymore. And I hope I'm not leaving out someone else because I couldn't see everybody on the screen. It was so good to see Brian Goralski uh, join us. Uh, I'm gonna get tearful just saying that, but it was wonderful to see Brian um, participate in 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 the Steve hiring. So that's it.
I didn't even get to see him.
Yeah, I saw him and I was just going through looking and I just wore my heart.
Hey, he and Kathy were here.
Yeah.
Oh, they were. I didn't see them on my screen.
Yep.
Great. Um, any other board members? I'm missing anyone? All right, moving on. I have uh, communications from our administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. Have a few things this evening and I'm I'm wondering if I can ask the students. Am I gonna overlap with you if I talk about the Blue Knights Marching Band or about Southington Deca?
Uh, you should be good, Mr. Cal.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, that's actually a nice segue because even though I have those things on, I do want to make mention because I know that he would never say this himself. Uh, but I've been reading quite a bit about the Southington Boys Swim and Dive. And uh, for those of you who may be following, Mr. Sheldrick has been doing quite well along with the other members of his team. So a little shout out for Mr. Sheldrick. Uh, we're happy to see you're back in the pool and 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 that the entire boys team is being very successful in you in particular. So congratulations. It seems like you you guys are are having a good season. I know some of the meets are virtual or all the, all the meets are virtual, but um, it it's just great to see everybody back uh, in the pool. We even saw pictures of diving in the paper recently, which is, which is nice. So our, our Blue Knights Marching Band uh, has been nominated by the Lincoln Memorial Centennial Committee to represent Connecticut in the Lincoln Memorial Centennial Celebration. This historic program commemorates the one hundredth anniversary of the dedication of the Lincoln Memorial. Now, the program is scheduled for dates in March, April, and November of two thousand and twenty-two. So Mrs. Osias is understandably hesitant, given the pandemic. However, the nomination is certainly worthy of celebration and our acknowledgement for Blue Knights Marching Band. So big shout out to our Blue Knights Marching Band. Uh, in addition to that, uh, student awards, Southington Deca always a fantastic group of students. They always do an amazing job. And um, they have been recognized for outstanding school-based enterprise or as the outstanding school-based enterprise. And I, and I believe we put this in the, in your board packets from board members. There's much too much information here for me to read this into uh, into the record. But once again, it's really outstanding achievement. And we see year after year, all all of these young folks who represent themselves in Southington High School and Southington as a community um, in a really great way. So thank you to both Blue Knights Marching Band, Southington Deca, uh, for your representation of our community. The last item we have on here, I just want to give you a very quick update on the uh, vaccine distribution for educators. Since, uh, most of you probably do not realize this, but since the information was released by the Governor's Office on Monday, uh, and really from Monday morning when we had a webinar with State Department of Education, Office of the Governor, Office of Early Childhood, Department of Public Health, all the, all the three-letter agencies. It has really been a whirlwind for us in terms of trying to plan to see if we can take care of our staff, our full staff. Uh, we really were not, our, our health district was not planning on doing in district clinics. And all of a sudden, the policy change came over the weekend and the Governor, Governor's Office decided that that was gonna happen and it was gonna happen for educators starting March first uh, with eligibility along with those fifty-five and older. So that's all news that I'm sure you've heard. That evolved over the course of the the past three days. We literally have been working twenty-four seven um, on a way to do that. We had several different iterations, some of which um, were difficult for us to comprehend that we would be able to do. We, we do not run clinics. We've never run clinics. Uh, but yet we were prepared to do that with the help of our, our Health Director. And a shout out to Kathy O'Hara, who's on with us this evening, who's our nursing supervisor, who spoke with our school nurses and who are wonderful people who immediately said, we'll, we'll do it. You know, we'll be part of it. But the logistics of organizing this and the fact that the supply of vaccine is is still limited and unknown made it a daunting task. Since then, so day four now, as we're, we're living and breathing vaccine clinics, Hartford Healthcare offered to be in partnership with quite a few school districts. And because our Health Director has a good relationship with Hartford Healthcare and they're fully invested in our community, as you know, we have a number of Hartford, Hartford Healthcare um, officials who reside in Southington. We have the clinic on, on Route ten. They've, they've been really great partners for us. Uh, so we're now working on affecting this partnership with them. The easiest way to describe it is that Hartford Healthcare would set aside times after work hours and on Saturdays for educational staff members to participate in dedicated clinics. So appointments at those times would be set aside specifically for educational staff, still dependent on the availability of vaccines, but yet they're, they're willing to do that. So we're going to uh, continue to engage in that discussion. But I I think over the course of three or four days, uh, it's evolved into a, a, a situation that's very, very, very doable, for lack of a better word, and will be, uh, it'll be wonderful for our staff because I think it'll provide them a great amount of flexibility. Hartford Healthcare will send us um, a link which Mrs. Posamano will send out to staff members. Staff members will be able to go in and schedule at a time or a day that's convenient for them. And it probably will take the, the entire month of March with one of our counts, including uh, bus drivers because people who drive the buses and people who are aides on the buses are included in this and and people who are engaged in childcare and are building such as our before and after school programs are all involved, would probably number about fourteen hundred individuals. So it's gonna take some time. And in the meantime, those individuals, particularly those who are fifty-five and older as of March first, can certainly go out and schedule appointments with other providers in the community. But I know there's been a lot of talk about it. I wanted to let you know that we work really, really hard on this. And uh, Mrs. O'Hara, uh, a lot of credit to her. She's just done tremendous work during this, this entire uh, period of time. Um, Mr. Medancy, Mrs. Posamano and I met extensively over the course of the last three or four days. Uh, and then we, we met with uh, Mr. Lockwood, our Health Director. So we, we feel pretty good about the direction that we've taken and how this has evolved. And we, we believe that that's going to serve our school district, members of our staff uh, in the, in the best way possible. So that's, that's the latest update. It changed by day over the course of the last four days. Sometimes it changed hourly. And um, I'm not sure that uh, the, the Health Directors in the state actually heard about it before we heard about it as superintendents, eleven o'clock Monday morning. So that's how quickly the policy changed and how how quickly we, we had to pivot and change direction. But I do feel pretty good about the fact that we'll be able to get our folks into these dedicated, uh, dedicated appointments. And um, and we should be able to do that over the course of the, of the month of March. And the location, by the way, is, is going to be at the new clinic that's opening up at Oakdale or that's at least what we've been told as of today.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Carmody, may I ask a question?
Of course.
Mr. Canelon, when I heard on Monday, I heard it um, in the afternoon, Fri- uh, Monday afternoon that the superintendents were going to be setting up clinics. I heard it, the Governor's announcement, and I was rather taken aback because it's not as though you don't already have enough on your plate. Um, at the same time, I also heard that you were undertaking not only for the school district but also for all, all early childhood um, establishments within your community. Um, and as of last night, I was on an OEC, the Office of Early Childhood, was saying that we were going to get word, it was gonna be coordinated through the Health Director, the Health Department in town, along with the superintendents, which I, I know you're, you're good, but running a clinic maybe beyond. Um, and now today I hear, oh, that didn't happen. So were you relieved of the responsibility? Mr. Medancy shaking his head. Were you relieved of that responsibility? Is somebody else gonna now coordinate that?
The, for uh, early childhood?
Yeah.
That's, you know, again, I, my understanding is that the Health Directors were given a choice by the state to handle that under their umbrella or to have a third party handle that.
Okay.
And I, I believe our health districts, you have to remember, it's not just Southington. It's Southington Plainville and Middlefield and Regional School District thirteen. Um, chose to move in the direction of having a, a third party administer that. And I do not know whether that will be Hartford Healthcare or will that, whether that will be a different uh, a different agency. So that's a, that's still a little bit up in the air.
Okay.
And I, I know that our Health Director was still in, in dialogue with, I, I continue to say the state, but there are multiple, multiple three-letter agencies involved. On, on Monday, there were more three-letter agencies in that meeting than I've ever seen, quite frankly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Canelon, you forgot the fourth agenda item that I asked you to put on regarding sloper.
I, you know, I'm very sorry, Mr. Medancy. Mrs. Carmody, if you don't mind, there is a fourth agenda item, which I would like to turn over to Mr. Medancy.
All right, I had. So prior to Mr. Caneling announcing his uh, retirement, I was absolutely torn about whether to jump or not because I have jumped several times in years past. Um, the last couple of years I hadn't been able to do because my daughter had gymnastics uh, meets on the same weekend that the jumps occurred. And prior to Mr. Canel, you know, once Mr. Canel announced his retirement and had discussions with the board about taking on the superintendency and agreed to do that, I lost all guilt for not jumping this year because I thought I was gonna have to jump for the next several years. So I gladly submitted my uh, exemption check today and I will wish you well this weekend and I will be jumping for the next several years ahead.
Yeah, if, if I could like just hold this up to the screen, um, that phenomenal cannonball is in fact Mr. Medancy. And uh, let's see, over here, that Wolfman is the former Chair, uh, Mr. Goralski. And um, and that's our wonderful operations gentleman, uh, Mr. Romano. So I, I have physical proof that uh.
Please accept that, board members, as evidence, uh, test, right, evidence, exhibit A, Mr. Romano.
Thank you.
Well, well said, Mr. Medancy.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. uh, Canelon?
No, that's, that's all, Mrs. Carmody, unless, unless Mr. Medancy wants to talk about the, the sloper plunge again. I think we're, I think we're good. Thank you.
Uh, Joe, make sure you jump this year.
Uh, that's a negative.
I, I, I thought so. I thought so. I kind of thought so. Okay.
If I may, Mrs. Carmen, I would love for you to jump, perhaps to represent the board this year, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion.
Wow, that was a good.
I would die probably. Oh, I don't know. Maybe I'll do it.
If I can add that, if Mrs. Carmen jumps, I'll jump.
Oh, Dave, don't go there, please, Dave. Then you'll start something, please.
After now.
That's like a double dog dare, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it is. I don't think so.
Triple dog dare.
You know what, Dave, we might surprise them just because we're old. They think that we can't do anything. You know what I mean? But we're a lot smarter than them. We might surprise them. Well, I'm old. I don't know about you, but anyway.
No, but that's, I want to do make one comment there because the first year that I jumped, Mr. Darrenowski said, you can't jump, you're too old.
I did say that. You did say that. Just for the record.
Did not, it did not stop me though. And seeing Mr. Lasbury here, if I can add one last thing, Bob Lasbury has done a tremendous job in drumming up support for lack of a better phrase. We always have great support from the school district and it's just so difficult during the pandemic. And Bob has been unfailing in his efforts to cheerlead and to get people involved. And we do have about 40 plus or minus jumpers under the Board of Education umbrella this year. And honestly, I think we've done a really good job in being partners and raising funds because these funds are for our kids in our community to go to Camp Sloper in the summertime. So thank you, Mr. Lasbury. It's been wonderful having you so, so active in that. And I know people really respond to your emails sometimes in a funny way.
I've gotten good at twisting arms. So thank you. I appreciate that. I haven't gotten Mr. Palmer yet. I'm working on him.
Yes, Bob, I just want to tell you, you are in serious trouble for announcing my name today. Just so you know, I will be getting you, okay? Moving on, to our student reps, I don't know who would like to begin, but we love hearing from you.
I would like to begin today. Good morning. Not morning, hello. Good evening, everybody. I'm doing well. Hope you're all doing well. And congratulations again to Mr. Medancy. I know the seniors won't be here to see you next year, but I am not going anywhere. So I can't wait to work with you and see the amazing things you will do for our community.
Thank you.
All right. Firstly, a generous donation of mindfulness bags was donated by Lisa Incorporated in collaboration with Steps. Forty student mindfulness bags were created through a grant and they will be dispersed through SHS Student Support Center. The bags have a lot of great mindfulness items such as mindfulness teen, a mindfulness teen book, journal coloring, fidget toys, prevention materials, and steps, gum, and chapstick will be added soon. A huge thank you to the staff at Lisa Incorporated and Steps for thinking of our SHS students. About a month ago, I said to everyone that I will be starting a student-led podcast, right, at Southington High School. And I am very excited to announce that my podcast, You Can Sit With Me, is in the final stages of getting up and running. So stay tuned. We expect the first podcast to be released in the beginning of March.
Good for you. Good.
Very exciting. Thank you. Thank you. Now on to our sports report. Our defending CIAC Class L in-state open champion girls gymnastics team is off to an undefeated three-to-zero start with the senior day meet this Saturday at 4:30 PM at American Gymnastics versus Weathersfield. The meet will be livestreamed on the SHS YouTube channel. The girls' basketball team is off to a great start with a 4-1 record going into a big game against Farmington at SHS tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. This game will also be livestreamed on the Southington SHS YouTube channel. Thank you.
So continuing that, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Canellin, for that very brief shout out. But also more importantly, a huge shout out to Mr. Rister for giving all of our student athletes the opportunity to compete this year with this, with the burden of a pandemic on all of our student athletes having that outlet for sports. I know for me, it's a big stress reliever and it's something I really love to do. And also, big shout out to Coach Tuttel for putting on an amazing swim and dive year and to all other coaches at Southington High School for doing the most that they can possibly do. So with that being said, the boys' basketball team has an undefeated home record this season, including a thrilling come-from-behind 48, 42 to 38 victory over Avon Tuesday night. The team looks for its first road win of the season tomorrow night at Farmington at 6:45 PM. The Blue Knights cheerleading team is providing plenty of spirited enthusiasm at both the girls' and boys' basketball games. And the SHS dance team will have its first performance of the season, season tomorrow evening halftime of the girls' basketball game versus Farmington. The boys' swimming and diving team, undefeated 3-0 record on the season after defeating Class Maloney Co-op Team last night, 97 to 79. The boys' Hall Southington Co-op Ice Hockey Team has a record of 3-1-1 on the season. Season night is Monday night at the Veterans Memorial Ranking West Hartford at 7:20 PM. And our SHS Club Sports of Girls Ice Hockey and the Coed Ski Team in Mount Southington are enjoying successful seasons as well.
Following the sports announcements, SHS has a YouTube page that livestreams all sports events. Our basketball games are currently being viewed at about 340, 400 times on average. We almost have about 500 subscribers and are hoping to livestream multiple sporting events and other school activities going well into the spring. We're also partnering with Mrs. Brooks Sports Entertainment Marketing Class. Look for ways to expand the offerings for students and community to watch our sports. One of our last announcements is that tomorrow in period two, we're going to be having a student survey going out to all students at Southington High School. And this is just an attempt to gather a data set pertaining to how the emotional status of our student body is at the current time. We've noticed that with Wednesdays being half-days, students are getting a break and they're getting the help that they need, but we're just trying to make sure, are we missing anything? Like how are students feeling from that? And yeah, thank you.
Oh, that's great. That's great to do that. Really. Very happy to hear that. Board members, any comments for our wonderful students?
Can I ask a question?
Ah, yes, of course you can.
Hey, I'm just curious about that survey. Do you know, I'd be curious to hear what some of the questions are you're asking. Do you have any off the top of your head?
Um, you can ask Mr. Pepe. It is his survey.
Okay, because it's, I've got a couple of them. But it is, it's a great, it is good because I think people take for granted that things are okay. A smile doesn't mean everything's okay. Mr. Pepe, I mean, just curious, just a couple, I mean, where are you focusing in on?
So the survey is based around Dr. Mark Brackett's work from Yale and references the mood meter. I'm happy to share a copy of the questions with, they're really prompts with board members, if that's your wish.
If you could, I'd love to see. I think that would be great.
That would be great.
Yeah, but it basically is attempting to gauge how students are feeling based on the mood meter and the descriptive words associated with the mood meter about school, about workload, about number of hours on the computer, and if students overall, if they're feeling is due to the amount of work or is it due to their current conditioning context surrounding the pandemic?
Because then of course, the most important thing about that is what are you going to do? I mean, I'm curious, maybe this isn't the time. We could talk about it another time. But once the data comes in and you start, you know, synthesizing it, the next step is the action, right? What kind of actions? That's going to be the important part.
Absolutely. So my board advisors, my three advisors warned me that I might be nervous about the results. And I told them, you don't ask a question that you don't want an answer to.
Absolutely, right.
We absolutely need to gauge how our students are doing and then plan accordingly based on the data that's gathered.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you. That's going to be interesting. I would, I think all of us would like to see the questions, right, board members? That would be kind of.
Yeah, absolutely.
So thank you, Frank, for sharing that. Moving on, we have committee reports. The elementary facilities committee, Collier's presentation. Um, I'm, I was a little confused and I, my apologies. Our last meeting, we reported out on, but I think, Mr. Canellin, you want to talk about what we're doing?
Yeah, correct. Coming up on March 11th, will be a special meeting of the board. And at that point in time, representatives from the Colliers Group will come in and talk with the full board about the information that they shared with the committee. So that was the point of putting it on the agenda so that it would be information that we could share in public. That'll be a special meeting. It'll be six o'clock on March 11th. And of course, that will be available. We'll do the same as we did last time. We'll do a Zoom meeting and we'll record the meeting and be able to put that information out there so that people can go back and view it as well. The, you know, as Mrs. Clark said, the group came in and provided a good deal of information, especially on the financial aspect of, you know, and the costs involved. And when last we talked as a committee, it seemed like it would be a really good idea to bring all of that information to the full board. It's almost impossible to replicate their presentation and do it in the amount of depth. So there was, there was an awful lot of information there and we thought that doing it in a dedicated meeting from six to take about an hour or so would provide board members with the opportunity to see all that firsthand and ask questions, et cetera. And then that would help provide some additional direction to the committee or to a discussion for the full board on next steps. So that was, that was the point of having it on there, making sure it's out in the public. If we post it publicly, people will be able to view it live and we'll record it. So we'll be able to go back to it. Other folks can look at it again.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have personnel report. We have a motion.
Move to approve the personal, personnel report as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Old Business Town Government Communication. I would just like to mention, I think it was Monday of this week, was it Monday of this week that the town council? Yes. It was this week, that had a public hearing on the Country Club Estates. And what a wonderful presentation the planning committee did in talking about purchasing the land. I spoke, Mrs. Clark spoke as a citizen and very well, and Mr. O'Shanna and Mr. Canellin spoke. It was very well done. And as you know, we will be having, the town council will be having a referendum in, is it May?
May 4th.
May 4th.
May 4th is the referendum. But it was very well done. All questions were answered. And so let us hope that we can, you know, they do know, I did tell them that a consensus was taken and that the entire board was behind that. So that was at our Monday town council meeting. Anyone else have anything on?
Carmen, can I just make a quick comment?
Oh, yes, sure, Chris.
I just want to thank the board for your support with that because it's such an important asset for the community. And having so many board members and Tim speak in favor of it, I think you hit the nail on the head. The presentation that was given from the town staff and all the department heads was just outstanding. And I just want to thank the board members for your support of that because it is such an important part of our community. And can't even imagine if there were houses put in there instead of maintaining a golf course. So thank you very much.
We appreciate, we understand that. So that's why we certainly do support it. Any other board members?
Just an important, an important note, it's a referendum on the 4th, but there's only one voting place. It's going to be at Darrenowski only. So people need to know that and hopefully we can get the word out so people know they need to go there.
Right. They will certainly do that. You know, Mr. Canellin, I have a question for you. That came, that someone asked me, are PTOs meeting?
PTOs are meeting virtually.
They are. So each school does have a PTO that does meet virtually?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, under, any other board members, under town communications?
I'm had something to say.
Is that you, Joe?
Mr. Canellin had something to say.
He has his hand up.
Yeah. It's just, there are two items. First is that the Board of Finance is holding a public hearing this coming Monday. And that also is virtual and people can connect with that by looking at the community calendar on the town website. And then the Board of Finance is, has invited us to come in and have a discussion with them in workshop mode on the 4th, which is Thursday. So Monday is the public hearing by the Board, Board of Finance, public hearing on the budget, on the total budget. And Thursday, Monday, the 1st is what I meant to say. And Thursday, the 4th, we will be chatting with the Board of Finance in workshop mode.
And that's virtual also?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And all that information did come to you from Mrs. Donello's office. So board members should have that. If anyone has misplaced it or need it again, we can certainly send that out again.
Were you thinking of me, Mr. Canellin?
No, I was just making a general statement.
Okay. All right. Because usually I misplace things. All right, continuing on. New business, the Leonard and Gladys Giles Scholarship. I've already spoken with Mr. Darrenowski, who agreed to continue to be on it because he's been on it for a long time. Dave Falvo, are you still willing to do this?
I am.
And where is Missy there? Missy, you did it last year. Do you want to do it again this year?
Yes, that's fine.
That's fine. Okay. So I will appoint the three of you. I'm sure Teresa will get in touch with you. You know, the process, you'll get the applications and so forth. Okay. So I really appreciate you doing that for us. Thank you. I don't have any other business. Does anyone else on the board? I think Mr. Darrenowski has a job to do.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. It was a wonderful evening.
It was. Thank you.
Congratulations, Steve. Well done.
Congratulations, Steve.
Steve.
Congratulations.
Be in your office tomorrow morning, Steve.
Bye, everybody.
Celebrate.
Wait, you're going.